Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for tonight's planning commission meeting. As always, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Commissioner McGay to lead us all in the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Baldino.
Here.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Keldoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hessler.
I'm here.
And Commissioner McGee.
Here.
All right, next is public communications. The opportunity for the public to address the planning commission, anything not on the agenda. Not seeing anyone on the podium, no one in the room, we'll go ahead and close public communication. Next are written communications. Do we have any written communication beyond what was already provided to us in our packets?
No, nothing submitted.
All right. That brings us to consent calendar. We've got two meeting minutes, one June 9th, 2021, March 28th, 2019. Does anyone want any changes or modifications? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. All right, next item is continued business none, which is going to bring us to a new public hearing. Our first hearing item is environmental assessment number EA 1314 and zone text amendment number 2104, a zone text to add chapter 1535 regarding density bonus to the El Segundo municipal code. And can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, commissioners, Chair Baldino and commissioners. In April, we had a study session on this topic where we kind of introduced you to the concepts of density bonus and the state law. So this should look very familiar to you. Just as a refresher, according to the state law, the residential developments that provide a certain number of affordable units in the mix can qualify and request density bonus and certain development standard concessions or exceptions. Just following up on some questions that came up on the, at the last study session, the city cannot require discretionary application for density bonus applications or reduce the requested bonus or concession levels, provided they are consistent with state law, just to clarify that. The ordinance before you basically does two things. It makes sure that our code is consistent with state law, and it also establishes some procedures for developers, property owners who want to request the density bonus and how to go about doing that, and the process through which the city would review those applications and make decisions. That is essentially our presentation on that item. We'd be happy to cover questions. Other than that, we recommend that you adopt a draft resolution to recommend city council approval of the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Paul. And just to be clear, this is something we are required to do by state law to amend our codes to comply with the state requirements for these density bonuses, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, any questions for staff? I know we covered this all thoroughly our last time.
I had one question about senior housing. How were our seniors, what's a senior unit? How is that classified? How's that determined?
Are you referring to the definition of a senior unit? I would have to look that up, but I believe it is people ages 55 and above.
Yeah, I thought so. I just wanted to clarify.
Would it be possible to add anything to the density bonus? And what I'm thinking about is I know throughout the years when we've talked about low income housing, there have been requests to say, can we make it a priority for folks who live in town or work in town? Many Mansions has told us, yes, you can do that. We've missed many developer opportunities. We have not done that. But would it be possible to add in our density bonus that, yeah, you can apply for the density bonus, we'll give you all the concessions you want, but the requirement is we would like you to offer low, very low income to those who live in town or those who work in town first. Not that it's exclusively for those, but that they have some type of priority.
I believe that topic did come up when the city considered a recent project and the possibility of including in a development agreement, a sort of a requirement to maybe give some priority to people that either live or work in the city. In the end, I believe the advice of the city attorney and then they can confirm was that that was sort of borderline, let's say, a borderline provision on whether we, the city could do that. It was kind of, but if it's okay, I'll just refer to.
Sure.
Yeah.
Hey, walking.
So it depends how it's tailored, and there are safer ways to do it. So, for example, if you broaden it to perhaps the South Bay, it's more palatable as not being so restrictive locally, although that may cut against the purpose. But in terms of the existing case law, the broader you make it, the less restrictive you make it, the more, the less likely it is to be successfully challenged. There's also worker preferences, if you want to give preferences to workers. What I suggest is that this be crafted as a recommended, additional recommended component that if what's already baked into the text is approved, this would be additionally considered by the council. And if you want to give some guidance as a commission as to the shape of the preference, if you want to make it exclusive to residents or maybe the scope of the residents, whether it's the city, the region, the county, or if you want to have additional considerations as to folks that actually work in the city but may live outside of the city, that could give staff direction on how to present that condition to the council.
Yeah, what I recall is that previously being told you couldn't restrict it to El Segundo residents, but then the consultant saying, I've seen cities do it, as long as you, people who work in town and people who live in town get a priority, then they've done that in other cities. So if they're able to do that in other cities, I would, you know, I would think we'd have a consensus. I would like to offer that to the folks who live and work in town here as well.
So, yeah, I think that should be presented as an additional proposed condition or component. We can have another standalone section that addresses that.
In your opinion, and I'm putting you in the spot, that's not contrary to what the state wants us to do, right? The state wants us to have density bonuses. They want us to have more low income housing. We want to have more low income housing. We would just like an opportunity for those who live and work here to have first crack at it.
How I've seen it, the distinction that I would like to confirm is, as far as Many Mansions' observation that they've done it before, since then, I've done some research and seen how it's better tailored. The context of those has been in a sort of discreet development project or through a development agreement. I haven't seen this in the context of a density bonus ordinance. So I would suggest that the direction be, you know, to the extent allowable under state density bonus law, the planning commission recommends that this would be an additional condition for the affordable units that are offered.
Okay, but written in the code for when you, when you come in to apply for your high density bonus, you're told, okay, that's great, here's all the application, here's what we want from you, and by the way, we require that you give first priority to residents and those who work in town.
Right. So the way that I'm hedging that, because I haven't seen that necessarily in the context of a density bonus would be to the extent allowable under, under density bonus law. And then I think, once we get to the council, we'll have a better sense of how that may work in the context of a density bonus.
Okay, let me ask, do we have consensus from the dais, or am I?
Yeah, I like that very much. I just wondered how you do that without being discriminatory.
That's why we have consultants.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, if there's a way to do it, I'm all for one, we should at least try.
Yeah, no, I like that idea. You know, veterans workforce that are here.
Yeah, Air Force Base, I mean, there's a ton of employees here.
Yeah.
And it's better for the environment. People who work in town don't have to commute to town.
Yep.
There's folks in town who can't afford, who are renting, can't afford to live here. It'd be great if they could buy in town. Any other comments on that?
No, I'm just wondering, so would the recommendation then be to approve the ordinance with the amendments pending legal review? Is that?
Well, yeah, the recommendation is to, to the extent it doesn't conflict with state law, to try to incorporate this requirement to give those who work and those who live in El Segundo a priority on these low income housing units, something to that effect.
And would the commission be comfortable with having flexibility on the envelope of that? So to the extent it is available to be applied to density bonus situations, if it is more legally permissible on a, in a larger scope, or do you want to give deference in that regard to where, for example, if, if we can't, if we find that it's, it's more of a roll of the dice to restrict it solely to city of El Segundo residents, and it would be more palatable and likely legally permissible if it's South Bay, would the commission be open to that?
Yeah, live or work. My personal preference would be El Segundo.
Right.
But I would, I would leave it to the council if you, after looking at this, decide that it's going to be a problem, then I, you know, I'll leave that to council to make that decision.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the, I agree, we would prefer El Segundo. I would, I agree with you that I would also prefer El Segundo. I don't want to, and I know you're just throwing terms out, but yeah, rolling the dice is probably, we wanted to make sure that it's legally sound for us to be able to do that.
Section five, when we're talking about the environmental assessment of this, and this is a change to our zoning regulations, I'm on page 19. What it says is, basically, we have found that the zone text is exempt from review under SEQA because it consists of only minor revisions to existing zone regulations and related procedures and does not have a potential for causing a significant impact on the environment. And I don't know if I can make that finding of high density units. I think the reason we're doing this is because we're mandated by state law to do that. And so I don't know if we can change that wording, because as I understand it, when the state tells us to make these changes to our zoning code to add density, then there is no SEQA requirement there because the state's making us do it. But what this is saying is that we're making a finding that this is not really a big deal. And I, for one, believe it's a big deal. I understand that we're going to do it, we have to go along with it, but I'm having trouble signing off on a document that's going to say I made findings I have not found. So is there a way to change that or massage that language?
Just to clarify, Chair, what you're, what the finding is related to is a zone text amendment, not a development. So there's, there's no actual environmental impact on amending the code. There might be on a development that exercises this rights of this code in which then another SEQA analysis would be done for that project that develops housing at this density utilizing the density bonus. But this is saying that there's no environmental impact related to this text amendment. A separate SEQA analysis would be done if a project were before you that proposed a density utilizing the density bonus.
Okay, well then, why don't we say that? Because I believe amending the zone and just allowing these projects to happen is going to have an impact. And it's fine if they're going to do a subsequent SEQA analysis. It's just this language I'm having a little heartburn over to say that this does not have a potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. But if you're representing that any large housing project taking advantage of density is going to go through SEQA, is that what you're saying?
Every project goes through SEQA.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is considered essentially not a project.
Right, right.
So that, that's why it's exempt, because it's considered not a project and therefore it's.
No, I get it. Okay, well then, let's say that, right?
Don't statewide mandates or regulations, they fit under the ministerial exemption during SEQA? Would that be a more appropriate one? So we're not actually staying?
There's several, there's several SEQA exemptions that you can use. We, we are using one that's very common for text amendments. Cities frequently also stack or layer SEQA exemptions, usually to make it more complicated for somebody to challenge it if they wanted to challenge it in court. That's the premise for SEQA is essentially to cover ourselves in court if somebody were to challenge us on the SEQA findings here. I don't think there's a need to stack or layer it. There's, there's many exemptions that we could have used. In this case, this is the exemption that we used.
I would maybe suggest we just take out the sentence consists of only minor revisions to existing zoning regulations and related procedures, and just say because it does not have a potential for causing a significant effect on the environment because we're just amending the code.
Sure.
I just don't agree it's minor. Is that okay?
Yeah, we can make that clarification.
Okay. That's going to be the same on the next one as well. It's the same language, so we can just redo that. Let me ask, do we have consensus? Does anyone agree with that, or am I? Yeah, okay. All right, any other discussions on this high density bonus zone amendment?
Just to clarify, the minimum project size is five units, is that right? Is that kind of the baseline for qualifying for a density bonus?
You need to have a minimum of 5% affordable units in your total number of units. That is sort of the, the minimum requirement for somebody to qualify to apply for a density bonus.
And so how do you, so doing that math, 5% units, 5% of the units, I mean, if you, do you round up?
So if, yeah, you would, you would round up, yeah. So I guess if you have, want to have exact numbers, if you had 20 units and you had at least one very low income unit in the mix, you could qualify for a density bonus.
So does that mean a five unit town home could not qualify for any density bonus?
They could propose more than 5% of their, the number of units. They could propose, you know, 20% or they could propose.
They could do 100%.
100% of the five units.
And then get 80% bonus.
And if they're 100% and within half a mile of a major transit stop, there's no cap on the density?
Is there any residential area that's within a mile of a major transit stop?
One half mile?
Half mile, which is a requirement?
Half mile, the, the nearest Green Line Station, well, the half mile mark is PCH from the nearest Green Line Station. So we don't have.
And the Green Line is a major transit stop, right?
Right.
Not the bus stops or anything smaller?
Yeah, exactly. And we, so we don't have residentially zoned properties that could take advantage of that particular.
Okay.
I would just add a caveat to that, that it doesn't prevent in the future from, you know, so PCH is a good example. If there were a, a bus line that met the criterion that, that qualified it as a major transit corridor, which is 15 minute headways and certain frequency and a number of bus routes, then it could become a major transit stop. And then that would be the, the proximity buffer for a half a mile would be taken from that point.
Are you saying there are no major bus stops on PCH?
I, I don't, there are bus stops on PCH. At this time, I don't believe any of them qualify as a high quality transit corridor.
It's going to be like every 15 minutes or something like that?
I have the definition of major transit stop. It's an existing rail or bus rapid transit station, a ferry terminal, I'm going to skip that one. The intersection of two or more major bus routes with a frequency or service interval of 15 minutes or less during the morning and afternoon peak commute periods.
So it's possible in the future that there's an intersection of two bus routes that meet both of that criteria?
Sure. Okay, great. All right. Anything further? All right, there's no further, well, first, we have to open public communication, right? So I'll go ahead and open up public communication, this new public hearing, and not seeing anyone in the room. I'll go ahead and close public communication. Any further comments from the dais?
Not for me.
No? Okay, well then, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the environmental assessment EA 1314, zone text amendment 2104, to amend chapter 1535 with the minor revision of section five that we discussed already.
And the additional.
And the, thank you, and the additional recommendation that staff and city council consider making it.
The local preference.
Local preference priority for those who live and work in town. That would be great. Okay, so that's, that's the motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Kevin, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to agenda item H3. We have environmental assessment EA 1316, zone text amendment number 2106, and this is a zone text amendment to permit transitorial and supportive housing in the residential zone. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chair Baldino. This is also an item that you discussed in April at your study session, and we'll have a short presentation here for you, just summarizing what's in our report. Again, citing the state law regarding this particular topic, transitional and supportive housing must be considered residential use, and it must only, be subject only to those restrictions to apply to other residential units of the same type in the same zone. So, so to answer some of the questions that came up at the study session in April, the city cannot require discretionary application for these types of uses because they're strictly considered as residential uses same as others. Cannot impose any, any restrictions that are not applicable to other residential units or uses such as, you know, security arrangements or operations or occupancy limits or locations. Just in summary, the ordinance adds definitions of certain terms to our code and then adds these uses, transitional and supportive housing, to the list of permitted uses in the city's residential zones. That's a short summary of what the ordinance does, and we recommend that the commission adopt, the draft resolution recommending approval by the city council.
All right, thank you, Paul. Any questions for staff? No, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this matter. The public's welcome to give their input on this zone text amendment. Seeing no one in chambers, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And all further comments will come from the dais? Any comments? No? Okay, well then, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero, thank you.
Chair Baldino, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to remind, remind everybody that you had the same sort of concern about the exemption used for SEQA on this item as well, right?
Yeah, I mentioned that before.
Okay, terrific.
It's approved as amended, just take out the language about it not being minor and not significant, but.
Great. Just wanted to make sure we mentioned.
Thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate that. All right, that brings us to new business. We're having a follow-up discussion regarding micro units and to provide direction to staff on possibly preparing a micro unit ordinance. So can we have that presentation? And I will note that we've got some 400 pages relating to micro units, various articles that staff provided. So thank you for that. And can we have a staff report?
Okay, while, while Paul gets, gets the PowerPoint ready, yeah, I just wanted to introduce him just a little bit. Just wanted to introduce the item a little bit as Chair Baldino has indicated. This is something that has, coming back to you, there were several questions that the, that the commission had regarding micro units and, and, and the intricacies of that and whether tax exemptions were applicable and to what, what type of projects those would be applicable to. So, and then I think the, the other item that the commission had requested was any kind of case studies. So we, you know, we listened to you, we heard that, and so that's the whole purpose of this, is to come back to you with what we found, the research we've done. Paul has gone through a lot of the case studies and he, he was summarizing it and provided a little bit of, of a taste for you in, in, in the, in the staff report. So as he goes through the, through the, through the PowerPoint, just keep in mind that, you know, these are, a lot of the information is here that is contained, that's contained in here is to address a lot of those questions that you had at the last meeting on this topic. And then ultimately, we'll probably, we'll end up wrapping up with a series of questions to help kind of direct the commission discussion to help us understand what direction you wish for us to go in with in preparing, ultimately preparing a micro unit ordinance, which we would be bringing back to you, similar to what we just did with the density bonus and, and transitional housing. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Paul.
Okay, great. So we had a good discussion about this topic last time we met, and the first couple of slides are kind of similar to what we showed you before, kind of a refresher on the topic. And generally speaking, what are micro units? They're typically smaller residential units between about 150 and 400 square feet. They have shared amenities onsite. They tend to be a good sort of entry level type of housing for different population segments, and they are usually permitted by other jurisdictions near transit. These are some of the areas that are covered by micro unit regulations in different ordinances, operations, onsite amenities, zoning, such as parking, density, height, and so on, as well as location standards. Where, where should these units be permitted? Going back to our April study session, one of the questions related to whether micro unit developments could qualify for RENA credit, the answer is yes, they do qualify as affordable housing regardless of their size, but they are subject to an affordability covenant, sort of an agreement to basically ensure that they are sort of. are sort of reserved for, uh, lower-income households.
But they can also apply towards market rate, RENA numbers, right?
Yes, they can, yeah. Um, the other question had to do, uh, was a little similar, but had to do with, uh, low-income housing tax credits, and, uh, whether micro-unit developments qualify. The answer is that it is possible, uh, but it may be a little difficult for mi- a micro-unit project to qualify because of the strict and lengthy criteria in the law, uh, the tax credit law. So I'm giving you a sense of some of the criteria in the law. So number one, uh, a hundred percent of those units must be low-income units in order to qualify for tax credits. So somebody has to make that commitment ahead of time. And, uh, uh, there are some minimum sizes for the individual units in order to qualify for the tax credits. Uh, four-hundred-and-fifty square feet minimum for a one-bedroom, uh, unit, for instance. Um, other standards relate to the mix of units, such as requiring a minimum of twenty-five percent of the units to be two-bedroom, an extra twenty-five percent to be at least three-bedroom in order to qualify for the tax credits. So those, uh, provisions there, uh, may, or requirements to qualify for a tax credit may be sort of in conflict with something that we may wanna do, uh, for a micro-unit ordinance. So micro-units are intended to be pretty small, typically smaller than the minimum size that, uh, federal and state law requires for, uh, tax credit, uh, qualification. So just letting you know about that, a little background on that. So it is possible. Uh, another topic that came up at our study session was parking. Uh, typically, uh, in other jurisdictions, uh, micro-unit developments, uh, enjoy sort of a reduced parking ratio. Uh, and there was concern about that particular issue, and specifically about impacts to the neighborhood. And, uh, we talked a little bit about how do we go about addressing that particular issue. Parking districts came up, metered parking, and other things. Parking will come up during the rest of the presentation as well, just letting you know. But that's something that we covered. Um, then going back to the case studies, uh, we did spend some time reading literature and looking at some case studies. Um, these are some of the topics that, uh, come up in, uh, these articles and case studies. Population groups that are typically served, uh, benefits or advantages of micro-unit developments, some of the barriers for construction of these, uh, developments, what are appropriate locations, what types of on-site amenities are, are good or appropriate, and then some other considerations as well. So we'll go over that, uh, briefly here, just one by one. So regarding population groups, the literature, literature tells us that, uh, micro-units, um, suit groups such as young professionals, singles, college students, um, empty-nesters or seniors in some cases. But it's primarily sort of young professionals and singles. Uh, some of the benefits or advantages include that they are efficient to build because they're, you know, they're, they're smaller, require, uh, you know, less material. So generally speaking, they're, they're more efficient. Uh, they're, as a result, they're more affordable for people who rent them, and actually more profitable for those who develop them, uh, because they can charge sort of higher per-square-foot rates for those types of units. They're more sustainable, as, uh, as I mentioned, because they require fewer materials. Um, also, ideally, they're located near transit, people drive less, and they have those sort of environmental sort of positive, uh, effects. They're structurally safe compared to, uh, sort of bootleg additions and conversions of people's garages and so forth. So if we allow, in theory, for these types of smaller units to exist in a city, people will be less likely to sort of, you know, do something illegally without sort of following, uh, proper codes, safety codes. Some of the barriers to, uh, developing, uh, micro-unit, uh, projects include some of the zoning standards in, in various jurisdictions. In some cases, they're just simply not permitted in a zoning code. Uh, there's, uh, parking or density standards that make it infeasible to do so. Uh, development impact fees, this was kind of an interesting thing I read. Development impact fees typically are based on, um, are in a per-unit basis. Um, so essentially, these micro-units tend to sort of have a heavier burden 'cause they're smaller. Um, so some of the literature suggests that perhaps impact fees should be based more on the size of the units, 'cause, you know, those smaller units would likely have, you know, fewer impacts. Uh, financing is a little bit of a challenge because this is a, a newer type of development, uh, and, and, uh, financial institutions are less familiar with that, sort of a little, a little bit less likely to fund projects or finance sort of mortgages and things like that for these types of, uh, uses, or a little bit harder. Uh, and there's also negative perceptions from communities about these types of units. Uh, if you remember a long time ago, SRO hotels, uh, had a certain reputation, and micro-units resemble those types of developments, so they bring on sort of that type of image. Um, regarding appropriate locations, transit is sort of the more, the most critical sort of, uh, aspect, or, uh, preferred sort of amenity to have in the area, in the, in the location, general location, followed by grocery stores. Uh, and then other amenities such as cafes, restaurants, green space or open space, like parks. And generally speaking, urban areas tend to be the more ideal areas to allow these types of units and for them to succeed. Some of the on-site amenities that are typically found or recommended in some of the literature are having, uh, on-site car share or bike share for residents, uh, having coworking spaces. That way, people are, are more likely to work, you know, from home or from their community. Uh, cleaning services, game rooms, gyms, and other sort of on-site amenities. And some of the other considerations, uh, in the literature include sort of suggestions for, uh, streamlining, uh, permitting for these types of developments to sort of help make it a little bit more affordable to construct, 'cause the faster you can build these, you know, the fewer the costs. Um, also permitting, uh, maybe mixed-income de- uh, developments so that you have sort of a, a mixture of, you know, uh, market rate and affordable units in a project. Um, also, in some cases, uh, it was recommended to, for cities to do a, either a test project or a test area. So if we were to proceed with this, to select a smaller, uh, area of the city to sort of allow some or few projects to go in, and then study them, and see what are the impacts. Uh, are our worst fears realized, or have things turned out okay? Uh, or what can we do to improve, you know, so to conduct a test, basically. Uh, other suggestions include relaxing zoning standards to, uh, allow these, uh, developments to occur, uh, focusing more on apartment projects versus condominium projects, 'cause then they tend to be a, a little bit, uh, less affordable than the apartment, uh, projects. Uh, and then also considering whether to, uh, require or incentivize affordability covenants or agreements. So that was a little bit of a summary of the case studies and the articles that we found. Um, and then in this part of the presentation, we're, we're bringing up some topics where we could use your, uh, your input, your ideas, your thoughts. That way, we can take notes, and then when it's time to draft an ordinance, we kind of have a, an idea of your perspective on some of these topics. And we can bring something back to you that reflects what the commission, um, would be in favor. So, um, some of the topics include, uh, locations. You know, we did talk about some appropriate locations in the case studies. Uh, and then previously, uh, we, we, uh, suggested that perhaps we could look at, uh, a radius around, you know, um, uh, bus stops or Green Line stations. Uh, in the literature, uh, grocery stores or amenities in the area were a big factor that, uh, helped, uh, these developments succeed. So that's another thing to consider. I'll go through these topics rather quickly, and we can come back if you like and discuss each one, however you like to proceed. We can stop and talk, uh, about each one of them if you like. Um, a percentage of micro-units. So should there be a minimum or maximum percentage of micro-units in a, in a project? Should we allow a project to come in with a hundred percent micro-units in it, or should we limit it, uh, to a certain percentage? The actual size of the micro-units themselves, what should that be? What should be the bare, bare minimum for a unit? Um, some of the literature that we found suggested that, you know, a hundred and fifty might be a little too low, 'cause it's a little hard to fit in some of the basics that, uh, somebody might need. Two-hundred square feet might be a little bit more, uh, livable. Um, and what would be the max? Uh, and I put in parentheses there the, sort of the tax credit, uh, discussion. If the, if the commission or the city wanted micro-unit developments to qualify for tax credits, we would have to think about those parameters and adjust them accordingly. Um, and then if there are any other factors to, uh, to use or consider regarding the size of micro-units. Uh, another topic is affordability. Should the city require, you know, uh, a certain percentage of units to be affordable? Uh, or should the city provide incentives for that purpose rather than require, uh, a percentage of units? What percentage would that be? Regarding parking, should we allow a reduced parking ratio compared to what we, uh, require for other residential developments? And what should that ratio be? Regarding parking impacts that we discussed last time, uh, would the commission be inclined to require more bicycle parking or storage, require bike share or car sh- share on-site to let's say offset some of those potential parking or traffic impacts, uh, or, uh, recommend proceeding with a parking district or some other more global solution to the parking issue? And those are some of the key topics that we wanted to hear, uh, from you about. And, uh, if there are any other particular topics that the commission is interested in, in, uh, regulating or touching on, we'd be happy to listen and take notes and help you with that. Uh, that's essentially the, our presentation. Um, at the end, t- tonight, we would like to, you know, have some idea of, you know, what are those main components that we should include in the ordinance, specifically, uh, related to those, uh, those areas that we discussed. That concludes our report, and, uh, would love to hear from you.
All right, thanks, Paul. Um, so the first two items we talked about, the state required us to do that, correct?
The first two items, yes.
Right. The high-density and the transitory housing. This one, there's no state requirement that we have an ordinance regarding micro-units, correct?
That is correct.
But I believe we're talking about this 'cause it was in our, our housing compliance that we did, 'cause, well, let me ask this.
Yes.
Why are we talking about this? Because it's in that housing?
Sure. Uh, two, two reasons mainly. Uh, one is, i- i- it was something that the city committed to in its housing element, that we would kind of, uh-
Look at it.
-consider and, and work on a, on ordinance on micro-units. But the other, uh, key reason is that, um, as I mentioned in the presentation, micro-units can address a, a specific need for housing in the city of smaller units for certain, uh, population segments. And, um, having an ordinance that kind of enables that, uh, will, will make it easier for the private market to come and develop those types of units. Uh, nobody's prohibited from building a small unit in town, uh, but it is a kind of hard to do for developers, uh, given some of the zoning constraints, you know. Uh, so we don't see very small unit developments today. Um, although generally speaking, there is a trend for units to decrease a little bit, uh, over time. So the, so the answer is, micro-units address a particular housing need, and the, it would be good to have a, uh, a set of rules to enable that to happen when we have developers coming in to, uh, proposing something like that. So I hope that answers your question.
But if we had a development like Pacific Coast Commons, and they wanted to have micro-units, we could allow that per development agreement, right?
Yes.
They would come to us and say, "Here's my idea. I'm gonna do like a dormitory type of thing," and then we would negotiate, "Okay, parking impacts, um, traffic impacts," like we normally do with development agreements?
Yes. And this is a, this is a, a potential route of establishing some of those ground rules ahead of time. That way, we don't know, we do not have to go through a negotiation on a project-by-project basis.
Well, if we give them a right by statute, then we have nothing to negotiate. They're just gonna say, "Your code allows me to do this," and now we, we don't get to ask for parking or, you know, traffic mitigation or anything else we would. Does, does that make sense? Like, my concern is, I, I agree, like, in, in theory, it might make sense, but also in theory, it might create a lot of problems for the neighborhood. And while you give us a lot of case studies, you know, about, about Long Beach and, and how they've been helping a lot of people in the area, um, I, for one, have concern about the entire residential area butchersing PCH. Now that we have Pacific Coast Commons coming in line, we've already got folks who live by, um, was that Grand Tropez? Residents who have initiated their own parking district 'cause they have too many cars in that section of town. There's another development right next door to that area that, that may or may not come online. Um, so I, I don't wanna put the cart before the horse in that we're giving the rights in our code for micro-units without first having the city assess what are the current impacts that the projects we've already approved going to have for the residents that side of PCH. Um, so I don't know how we get there. If this is something where you would have to kind of crunch the numbers and say, "Okay, let's take an overlay at the Bank of America and assume micro-units and super-density bonuses are applied. How many, you know, parking can, can we require? What are they gonna be allowed to do? And how does that affect, uh, the rest of the neighborhood?"
Question, 'cause I'm, I think we're on a similar line of thinking. It wouldn't be by any means within my first ten choices of how we get to affordable housing, but what is the consequence, now that it's in our housing element, of not having an ordinance?
Uh, well, it is, it is in our ordinance because it is considered a one way to help us get to, uh, our goal of providing more affordable housing and more housing in general in the city. So if, uh, the city doesn't adopt this ordinance, then we're removing one of those tools that we could have used to, uh, reach our housing goals. And then the question will be, can the city still meet its goals or its obligations without it? And that's what we would have to, um, uh, figure out or explain to the, the state. That's, that's basically it. So we'd have to find, make sure that we can still accomplish our goals or reasonably accomplish our goals in our, um, during this planning period, housing element planning period. I hope that answers, uh, your question. Were you looking for something, uh?
I don't know that there is a legal answer on how exposed it leaves us. It sounds like if we make good on all the other things and make progress, then we're okay.
That's right.
But it could be something that hangs us up since we have already said that we're gonna, it's an option. And if we just scratched it all together, that could be an issue.
We would have to explain, uh, whether we can still accomplish our goals. That's basically what it would be.
Yeah, and, and aside from RENA numbers, aside from trying to, to meet some metric, I see micro-units as an opportunity to have more affordable choices, even at market rate.
Right.
Have more affordable choices for people that might not want a three-bedroom house. You know, what, what about a guy who's an empty-nester, or a woman, and her husband has died, and he's got a four-bedroom house, and he sells it for two million dollars, and all he needs is five-hundred square feet, and he can live in an area with other people that are his neighbors in a new social environment. And, you know, it's, I, I think micro-units have gotten a bad rap, or at least a stigma, because maybe it feels like a boarding house or a halfway house or something. But really, uh, I, I have seen micro-units that are beautifully amenitized and s- cool design, and no different than any other, uh, really high-end apartment or townhome. Um, and i- i- it, it can be a great solution in just a smaller space for the people that want that sort of environment.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really good point. I think that some of the case studies that, that you brought up and some of the, the considerations within them kind of paint this, a, a, a different kind of picture for microhousing, 'cause either there are things like thirty-day minimum, which I don't think that, that any of us would approve. It becomes a kind of a transient housing, or, you know, require a bathroom, which kind of gives a- It becomes a kind of a transient housing or, you know, require a bathroom, which kind of gives the the wrong connotation. I think that if it didn't have a bathroom or a kitchen area, it would be a nonstarter for for most of us here. But if you look at it from the perspective of, look, this could be an affordable way for teachers, firemen, whoever, you know, that are single people that that want to live in El Segundo for, you know, a lot of reasons, then it's an opportunity to do so. I think that it does, microhousing does get a kind of a bad rap. And I think that kind of the even the case studies that we looked at gave it a bad rap. If we can dictate, you know, the type of microhousing we get through an ordinance, then I think that if we have the power to do that versus kind of these really, really basic requirements here, then, you know, we might have an opportunity to to get ahead of it, like you said. I I don't think an ordinance will promote, will encourage it necessarily. I think the market will dictate if that happens or not. But if we can lay down some some minimal requirements and groundwork, I think it could be beneficial for us.
Do we know, does the city staff know what percentage of El Segundo residents are single or double? I don't mean single like dating app, Ryan.
You've got some spleens.
Right. No, I mean, what, you know, how many, and maybe that data doesn't exist, but.
That exists. We just have to look up, but we have to look up the census data to to answer your question. I don't remember that particular.
Okay, but but it's a it's a metric that is should be used in this discussion.
Well, to to partly answer your your question, that segment of the population is increasing compared to decades ago. And some of the articles that we read discuss that just growing trend of more and more single households. I just don't have the specific numbers for.
Sorry, or or even smaller households. If somebody wants their child to go here, if a single parent wants their, you know, only child to come to this school district, you know, that's a good thing. But I don't think we should give any special concessions like streamline permitting or reduce parking requirements or things like that. I think that it should be looked at as a normal multifamily housing with the same rules and requirements that that we have for them. And nothing special to, you know, to strictly, like I said, like streamline permitting.
Would it be possible in an ordinance to not only kind of lay out the parameters of the microunits, but also require that if a developer wants to pursue this path, they they have to get some type of development agreement? So then we can at least look at it by a project by project basis? Because I'm not opposed in theory. I just, I'm I'm opposed to unleashing these new rules blindly upon the city. And then ten years from now, you know, what have we done? But I don't know if that's allowable in ordinance to say, yeah, here's here's what we do for microunits. But you also require a separate development agreement. Tell us what your project is. How are you gonna deal with parking? How are you gonna deal with, you know, being close to transit and all those requirements?
Absolutely.
Oh, so we can't do that?
Yeah, you can't say it's approved subject to approval of a development agreement under the development agreement law.
Because I really like the parking and all these things are really a case by case basis. Like, it may be a great idea next to amenities, but then if we just say, yeah, you can do this anywhere you want in the city.
Sure.
We may be looking at some problems.
Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, I would not advocate for any blanket approval of this stuff.
Yeah, but that's what, I mean, when you.
Is that what?
That's what we're talking about when we're talking about it and preparing an ordinance. We would amend our code to say, just like we say, ADUs. You've got a right to do an ADU. Come on down to the city and we'll give you your permit. They're saying, we want a code amendment says, microunits, here's all the things you need to do. And if you do these things, they get that. They don't come to us. They don't go to city council. And I'm saying, we should still have some control over these projects since it's new to the city. We we don't allow them now. It may be great for for housing numbers and everything else, but we should still maintain some control over what about the negative impacts of this specific project?
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
Are are we talking about the size of a space or are we talking about a density issue here?
Yeah, I don't know. That's why it confuses me too, because it's not prohibited, right? I mean, anybody can come and build.
Yeah.
Make a.
You can build a 200 square foot place in your backyard, I mean, as an ADU. Can't, or is it, there's a, I guess there's a minimum 400?
Yeah, I know there's a maximum.
Right. Well, there's definitely a maximum. But so I guess my question is, are we talking about square footage or are we talking about density?
Chair, if I may, we we are talking about square footage, but but density is is part of the the conversation as well. They're not, you know, they're not looked at in a in a silo. I and and it helps sort of lead to my my question and maybe I rephrase it, you know. And I think you're you're making the point that developer could come to town today and and develop these microunits under our current standards. Would you, the commission, have a problem if a developer came in and did a 100% microunit project and then did affordable housing and got an 80% density bonus with the microunits? Would that be concerning to the commission? If it is, then this is the mechanism to identify and develop standards specific to microunits that then they would be beholden to providing limitations and barriers that that limit the quantity if it were, you know, if you were to establish a maximum in that case. So, you know, you you gotta look at this from from a couple of different angles. And because just by legislating it doesn't mean we're facilitating it. By legislating it could also mean we're limiting or or restricting the capacity or potential of a developer coming in and taking advantage of what is already allowed today. And as Paul mentioned, you know, the trends, it's happening slowly. But the trends for unit sizes and mixed use or or multifamily housing is is shrinking. The one bedroom apartment or multifamily housing unit used to be anywhere between 1,000 to 1,500 square feet. Now you're seeing one bedroom units at 800 to 900 square feet, and those are market rate. And so there's there's in the same, you know, ratios happening with two bedroom and studio units. And so you're seeing developers see it become more lucrative to build smaller, lease higher and and make more money. And so rather than wait for that to happen and wait for it to become lucrative to develop a 100% affordable, or I'm sorry, a 100% microunit project, we might want to be thinking about what are the limitations we want to impose on somebody who does want to develop with microunits? So I just want to rephrase some of the question because we need to be talking about both sides of it. If the appetite isn't there to incentivize it, then we need to talk about how do we facilitate or limit or or at least control the environment that we want to maintain, if that makes sense?
No, that's a very good point. You're saying we should get ahead of this. And if there's things that we're envisioning that horrify us and give directions to staffs that we can craft an ordinance that would not let those things occur?
That's right. The other thing, and I don't want to, you know, sidetrack too much, but I did want to give context. This this particular topic has been in the last three cycles, this current one including of the housing element. So that's two cycles prior to this one. It's been in the housing element in some form. Previously, it was referred to as SROs. Then there was a little bit of wordplay. And now we're calling it SROs or microunits. And so although nobody's knocking on our door today saying, hey, how come you're not doing this? The state is certainly looking for reasons to hang us a little bit, you know, when they when they have the chance. And so I don't think we have to do something super robust on microunits, but I think we need to have a response to HCD if they do ask. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to get ahead of something if if we have the chance.
Well put.
I agree. And to be clear, in my mind, an SRO and a microunit are two very different things. So are we, are they lumped together now and that's a concern?
They they are two different things, but the way that our our housing element is currently drafted or crafted and exists is it says SRO or microunits. So if there's actually theoretically, if there's appetite to shift gears and say, let's develop an ordinance for SROs, we could shift gears and and do that instead. And that would satisfy this this program in our housing element.
Right. And and if I may add one more thing, along the same lines as Michael's comment, we could, for instance, look at some of the stand the standards, you know, and make sure that in future development, housing developments, there are some minimum amenities in each of the housing units. So if we don't like to have SRO hotels, we can say each unit must have its own bathroom. Each unit must have a minimum sized kitchen or kitchen sort of equipment or facilities, just so we can set those rules about what is acceptable. Or as Michael said, should we set a maximum percentage of microunits in any sort of housing development? You know.
Can you define the difference between SRO and microunit for us?
It's a it's a fine line. I don't have exact definitions, but I I believe that SRO stands for single.
Room occupancy.
Room occupancy. So SROs tended to have simply a room for somebody to sleep and nothing else in it.
Shared bathroom, shared kitchen.
And shared everything.
Okay. That's a that's a a big distinction.
Versus, microunits have a lot of those sort of facilities inside the unit and then some additional facilities outside that are common. So for instance, a microunit could have a small kitchenette, you know. But then the, let's say, the apartment complex could have a large kitchen where somebody can, that somebody can share and utilize when they need to. I hope that helps.
Yeah, yeah. So so we could, we could say, any unit has to have its own bathroom and kitchenette, regardless of what you call it. And that way you can start to 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 discern between some of the the higher uses of these things.
Correct.
And they can make a small unit and still have a shared gym and office and everything else.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I would have concerns over kind of the kind of communal living versus, you know, standalone residential units where, you know, they don't have kitchens or they don't have their own bathrooms. That that give me a lot of concern.
Well, let's, can we get consensus on the dais about requiring kitchens and bathrooms in each unit at a bare minimum?
I think so.
And and maybe the kitchen has some.
Yeah, it could be a kitchenette.
Kitchenette, right. But a sink.
A sink.
An oven, a fridge.
Room for a fridge. We could borrow language from the ADU provisions, which.
Oh, yeah.
Which is very similar. The other bathroom should have a shower and all that stuff. Okay, what about sizes? Do we do we care about how small or large they are? Well, let's let's ask a different question. What about, does anyone have a concern about a development being 100% microunits versus 20% or 30%?
I don't know. I think I'd have to see.
See, I've seen it, right?
Right, right.
Well, if we said 20%, then if somebody and we're, if we say you need a development agreement, if they wanted more than 20%, then we could negotiate that on a project by project basis, right?
Sure. So it would be a max 20%?
Maximum, yeah, 20, 25. But again, if a developer wanted more than that, they would they would come to us with a proposal and we would, we could negotiate, you know, what we wanted.
Would there be a a minimum number of total units that would trigger that? I mean, if it was like a five unit microunit complex, I mean, if it max 25, 20% whatever choose, I mean, that that would be one. If we were talking about 100 unit complex and someone wanted 100% microunits versus five unit complex, that means a big difference.
Yeah, no, I agree. That's why it's weird to like make some kind of blanket rule.
Yeah.
Because it's really a project by project. It can work in a lot of different ways and a lot of different areas. And there's some areas where I don't think it would work at all.
Yeah.
But it depends, again, on the location of the project. So should we should we discuss if there's an area of town and staff has recommended, they've provided two things? I'm looking at pages 102 and 103. One is a fourth mile from Beach City's transit bus stops. Oh, there you go. Thank you. So that'll take you all through the R1 zone. And then the next one is one mile from the Metro Green Line, which is more just on the, that's predominantly an R3 zone over there. We've got a lot of older apartment buildings, so maybe this concept makes sense for somebody who's got a an older, larger format and they can put more units in. So any ideas between these two recommendations?
Well, I I think from a high level view, these things make sense in places where people want to be and they want walkable environments. You know, in an ideal world, it's right next to the Green Line and, you know, a short walk to somebody's office, you know. But here on this side of PCH, I think you gotta be near restaurants, grocery, you know. And again, there's so many different user types. Is it, is it a young person who wants that social nightlife and they don't have to take an Uber somewhere and they can walk to Rock and Brews or the Tavern? Is it an an older person who wants a social network and they want to meet people in the park? And, you know, so you've got a lot of different user types. But I think a certain amount of density is is critical to make these things work.
Yeah.
I I think it should, I I don't think that it should be tied to distance to transit. I think it should just be whatever the existing land use is, if it allows for multiunit.
So limited to like an R3 zone and not an R1 zone?
Yeah.
I agree with that. I do.
It seems simple.
I do. I struggle with this because it feels like the antithesis of everything that we have talked about up to this point. And I'm normally on the opposite side of the coin, right? Like pushing density and pushing housing. And I I so I'm having an internal conflict because I don't know what the hesitation is here. But to me, the idea of converting like along, you know, Washington Park, those apartments on Indiana Court into microunits is more problematic than this idea of a density bonus for affordable housing to me. And I'm still, I, your point was excellent because it helped me understand the other side of it about why we would create development standards to limit it. But it feels like we're encouraging it. I don't know. I struggle with how to, and I would definitely put a minimum square footage on the units.
Sure.
But what that is also feels quite arbitrary. I don't feel skilled to dictate what that looks like.
Yeah, I I don't know that having an ordinance like this would would encourage it. I think that it could it could discourage it if if you wanted it to, right? I mean, you could make things, the requirements pretty tough, you know. But again, yeah, I don't think that it'll be driven by the market more than anything. I don't see this as encouraged. I don't think some developer is gonna see this as a hotspot to do this as a big money maker, because it just doesn't make financial sense right now.
I totally agree. I think my concern is almost that some inexperienced builder, developer, apartment owner is gonna say, oh, this is a, this is an easy way for us to increase revenue and chop up these units. And then you get, I don't know, a bad actor, maybe.
Well, we can set these parameters and then have that requirement that you must get approval through a development agreement of any project which has microunits. And that way it comes before the commission and goes to city council. And if it's not gonna work, we have an opportunity to see it. Because that was my concern. I don't want to approve a bunch of rules and then these things are popping up without us even knowing.
Right. Has has the city done any public outreach on this topic? You know, I'm thinking about the downtown specific plan that's about to happen. There's a questionnaire that's out there, you know, ideally, not ideally, but potentially downtown district. Sorry, Brenda, I know you live right here, but, you know, having, I I'm a fan of more people living here to make that farmer's market more vibrant and make these restaurants more 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 vibrant. And so, you know, is is the downtown specific plan a potential place to do this? And I don't know the answer to that, but if you ask the residents of El Segundo a question like, would you be interested in living in a 10 by 20 foot space? And I don't know how you give somebody context because people don't know. People don't know what square footage means. But I I guess my my question is, has there been any public input on this?
The the housing element process was a way of getting a sort of input on a variety of housing topics. It didn't necessarily drill down to the specifics of a microunit ordinance. But that was one way of getting the public engaged and give us, giving us input on what they need, you know, as far as housing is concerned or affordable housing. We held a study session with you. And part of the purpose of that was to have a longer discussion about the topic than simply bringing an ordinance to you, right? So people had a chance to see that agenda, see that notice and join us and offer their input.
Sure.
So that was sort of our our attempt to, you know, try to get as much feedback as we can.
Also, I, you know, I think it's it's tough. This has gone through three cycles of a housing element. So that's roughly 26 years with three cycles where theoretically there was a public review process. But we all know that public policy documents, no matter how many times you throw it in front of people, may not get the attention that.
Uh, public policy documents, no matter how many times you throw it in front of people, uh, may not get the attention that that you wish until something happens. And then they all show up to the chambers, right? So it's tough because it has been in front of the public public for for many, many years. Many, many different versions or a body of the Planning Commission and City Council, but um, until it actually gets effectuated, then then it really. Becomes a more difficult or challenging conversation. Um, I wanted to also address some of the comments about. The worry of existing apartment complexes converting. Uh, this is also a great tool to address. And I think Chair, you were starting to get to that point where you could build in standards and so. Uh, parking is one of those things. If they're required to provide parking, uh, they only have what they have and so they can't just. Convert spaces and and then magically have floating parking spaces and and so there's other mechanisms you can require. If their conversion is going to happen, you can require a certain amount of common open space, which is an old traditional mechanism for. The conversion of apartment units to condominiums as they would they would require these upgrades to be met. In order to ensure that there was common open space since typically these spaces, people don't have backyards or side yards where they have. Private space where they would when in a single family or a townhome style. So there's a lot of different mechanisms that you could impose. That would probably prohibit most of those property owners from being able to satisfy those requirements unless they demoed the project. Bought a couple of properties on either side of them and then did a new project with with some microunits in mind. Which is maybe not such a bad idea to to get new housing product out there.
Yeah, and and I appreciate the the last couple of housing elements we've gone through in the public outreach. I I don't think we've ever actually physically. Or literally asked the question and we may be trying to solve a problem that's not really there, you know, so. Uh, I don't know what the demand is for tiny houses. I don't know what the, you know, and so I'm not against them. I just don't know that. What what uh what the market will bear.
I'm just impressed that we were that forward-thinking twenty-six years ago.
It started with SROs, which was very, very big in in, you know, twenty some odd years ago.
In more densely urban spaces probably, right? Or maybe not necessarily.
Uh, I I think they were pretty common throughout, particularly in the, uh, you know, post-industrial, you know, areas that. That had, you know, a a strong blue collar workforce. I I think they were pretty common.
There are a couple in town that maybe have converted or been for sale and I'm sure somebody. Added a bathroom and a kitchen and sold those things, but. Right on Grand above um.
Oh, the Hotel G.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think uh, we don't have the problem yet. So we may be trying to solve a problem that that we don't currently have. But we know that housing is is a big issue in California. It's only gonna increase as cities try to 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 resolve it and things are just gonna. Kind of ratchet down, I think, in the future. Um, I think this is a way to kind of future-proof how we move forward, right? We can set our own minimum standards now. Or which, you know, are not not just, but El Segundo's are are what we think should be the minimum standards instead of. Potentially following just what the state's minimum standards are, which we probably wouldn't a- agree with. And I think that um. It it gives us a chance to to maintain control of that because we don't know what what it's gonna look like and we don't want to make decisions later on when our backs are against the wall.
Right.
So this may be a good opportunity to.
Well, they haven't drafted the ordinance, so maybe we just give them direction on areas. And then if staff can look at what other cities have done, neighboring cities, if they have similar things and, you know, with respect to requiring parking. Requiring bicycle or shared ride parking, requiring some percentage to be communal. Um, where that be, yeah, uh, a certain amount of green space because our parks are already impacted. And so more density means there's gonna be no more need for outdoor areas and green space. Um, but it's hard to give you specific direction without kind of seeing it on paper. Um, so you may have to come back again with some type of draft ordinance and then as we think about it and talk to people in the community, we might have different ideas and. Because it's 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 hard to visualize without an actual proposed project in front of you where we can say, well, here's a problem with this intersection. But traffic mitigation might be another one if there's something being done in there and of of course, the caveat of having to have a separate development agreement. Should we in make a requirement to have low-income housing as a percentage if you're gonna have microunits? I mean, I I'd like telling people you have to think about low-income housing. I don't like low-income housing only being tiny units. If that makes sense.
Yeah, perfect sense.
Yeah, because not everyone is a single person. Right. In the low-income.
Right. If you're gonna build a project, you should have housing for all types of families and people, so.
I agree with that.
Um, but again, maybe it makes sense uh for a.
And to that end, you have um limits on the amount of people that can live in a tiny unit. I mean, that I think would be very important.
Oh, that's right, huh? We're saying it's four hundred square feet. Can we require that's single occupancy?
No, or certain thresholds.
Uh, what I through, if it's an affordable housing unit, there's some natural things that will prevent it from being more than a a more than two folks probably. Uh, the income limits itself will will prevent most couples from from being able to reside there if if. Because once you exceed that household income threshold, then you no longer qualify. So naturally, that's going to weed out anything more than probably two. Full-time income.
What if you have a family of four and there's one person working and it's all they can afford?
Yeah, I I don't think we can limit the occupancy other than what's the outlined in that Public Health and Safety Code, which is one occupant. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I think it's two occupants per bedroom plus um one per seventy square feet of. Living space. So if you had a den or a dining.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. I mean, that those are some checkpoints, right? That keep it from being a family of eight, living in a.
But it it's certainly something we can look into and I I might suggest maybe we designate a subcommittee to work with staff. To to craft this, you know, this is a a rare opportunity that we actually get to plan instead of react, which is something that, you know, I think we're trying to shift the gears on. Um, and and I think it's a good opportunity and a good practice for us to collaborate. And and for the commissioners to be part of that process with staff um for topics where we're not under the gun to, you know, to your point.
Another thing that concerns me is in the case studies that you guys provided, which were very good. Thank you, by the way, for gathering those. Um, it seemed most of the success stories hinged on uh on no or little parking. And so there was there was uh incentives to decrease the amount of parking. Uh, if they're close to transit areas. I mean, that's what made the projects pencil for some of these developers. And I think that um, we're in a tough spot here. If if we're gonna have a a one-to-one ratio, you know.
Right.
Now suddenly you've got quadruple parking, not uh, you know, not not just a few more spots. So I I think that's gonna be an important topic is parking.
Mr. Chair, on the on the issue of the development agreement, I just want to add a caveat, given like the. Hundreds of housing bills that have been adopted in the past few years. Uh, when the stars align a certain way, for example, under SB thirty-five, there are instances where it's mandated. That a housing development be approved ministerially. So I would just want to, um, and I know we're sort of just kicking things off, but. Have have an out there just, you know, unless otherwise prohibited, then.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Want to make that comment. Thank you.
We can always be preempted by the folks at the state. Okay, so should we, is there interest in a dais to to get a two-person subcommittee to kind of flesh this out a little bit more? So we're not just up here blindly making, and if so, do we have volunteers?
Don't look at me, Michelle.
Heschler has nominated Commissioner Heschler and Commissioner Keldor.
Yeah, uh, sure, yeah.
Okay, Michelle?
Sure, absolutely.
Go team.
Team microunit.
Team microunit. Um, there there is value to getting something, if anything, on the books, especially if we've been working on this for twenty-six years. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to work with staff and then we'll look forward to um what you guys come up with and um further discussion. All right. Anything else, guys? Um, thank you for your thoughts and comments. I thought it was productive. I know I had my mind changed.
No, this is very helpful because we did wanna get a sense of where the commission wants to go with this. Just in gen- generally speaking, so we kind of have an idea which way to look and what kind of standards to tackle. So this is very helpful.
John, thank you, Paul, for all the work you put in on all these ordinances. I can I can tell all the time you put in. I mean, it's appreciated. Thank you. Okay, uh, that brings us to uh next agenda item report from our Director of Development Services.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a couple of items. One, uh, you know, thank you, Eduardo, for sending out the the last, the most recent email with the calendar projection. Um, I think that'll be a a helpful tool for for the commission and as as part of that, I just wanted to remind the commission. Um, that second piece in his email was a up-and-coming uh VMT calculator. And I had the link to the current draft is actually available, so you can go on there and play with the calculator to see. How developments, future developments anywhere in the city would uh play out with the VMT model. Uh, for purposes of analyzing its impacts for for Sequo. And so this is state mandated again. Um, it's something that we're already doing. By law, we are required to do this. Uh, we just don't have our own calculator, so. They, when the projects that have come before the commission have either started in a time that was prior to the VMT model and they're still allowed to use. LOS or now what you'll see is these projects are required to use VMT and we do so, we still we still require an LOS analysis. So that the city can um and particularly Public Works can assess the impacts physically on the city. And still require um improvements to the city to address those other impacts that are uh not Sequo-related. But otherwise um, traffic-related and but uh it's a good tool. Uh, it will be a a helpful tool for developers to project. Um, down the road, uh, and it will be less ambiguous uh as they explore their development opportunities. And so I would implore you to to scope that out. Uh, and if you have any questions for for staff, um, feel free to to schedule some time. We are on track to take this to council in uh Oc- October? September, August? We work backwards. I know it's not, I know it's not July, but uh, August or September. The calendar's a little cramped because they they go to recess during July, but. Um, I just wanted to to give the commission an opportunity to to look at it because those things come before you for every development project. And so uh, it'd be good to be familiar with that and then have a chance to to chat with staff about it.
Sorry, and to follow up on that. And it's also helpful to us because if there's any any kinks that you find, you know, sometimes, you know, we go in there, we kind of know. What we're what we're doing. Well, at least we play it off like we do, but uh, but you know, we know where to click, but you know, you as as kind of like the. General public, if you will, if you kind of identify some something, some hiccups, let us know so that way we can, because it's, you know, it's not finalized until. It's finalized and so this is more of a a working draft and like I said, a- a- as you, if you do find anything, alert us to it. So that we can also uh work with our consultant to rectify those those um, those kinks in that. Thank you.
Thank you. The only other couple of things was, uh, as you might know, the budget was adopted on Tuesday night for our next fiscal year. Which also included another item um ancillary to the budget, which is the Development Impact Fee Schedule. So the Development Impact Fee Schedule was adopted, um, and just backside of the the envelope. Our impact fees went from roughly fifty-seven hundred dollars per unit for a residential project to roughly forty-six thousand. Dollars per unit. Um, and that is a one-hundred percent cost recovery. Uh, those numbers are based on actual costs of services. That that the city provides to those projects and so it's a monumental change um for the city. Uh, where we're recuperating or we will be recuperating costs uh that are burdened upon the city for for new developments. There's a phase in, uh, because it is a significant increase. Uh, there is a phase in where the city will be collecting fifty percent. Uh, cost recovery in the first year, seventy-five percent on the second year and one hundred percent on the third year. Uh, so there is a phase in, so it's not one hundred percent out the gate, um, but we'll get there in three years. Uh, and lastly, anecdotally, our department name is changing from Development Services. To the far more traditional and well-known name of Community Development. And so that is a typical industry standard. Uh, so we'll be changing our name to Community Development uh starting July first. And I think Eduardo has a couple of announcements.
Uh, yes, thank you. So um, I I wanted to to just alert the 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 commission to a couple of things. So a- as you know, we're we're still in the process of of um of of um responding to. HCD's comments on our housing element. So uh, yeah, so that we're we've identified. We're trying to 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 identify sites and 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 work with our consultant to address those. So I just wanted to alert the the commission that. We're working on it. It hasn't been yet approved, but uh i- if if we need to come back, we'll let, we will. Uh, but at this point, it doesn't seem like we we there is a need for that, but I just want to let you know that we continue to work with our consultant. To um, to uh respond to some of those uh comments that HCD had on our initial submittal for the housing element. Uh, secondly, um, I wanted to just also alert you to the bylaws. So as as far as I know, since I've been here, um, Chair Baldino has always been the chair and.
Yeah, we're supposed to vote on that at some point.
Yeah, so so I went ahead and and did some research and anyhow, per the bylaws, the uh, the the. Election of the chair and vice chair is to occur in December, uh, so that way the new chair and vice chair can can take the helm. In January. So I mean, we're here in in June. I mean, unless there is a a desire to, you know. Re-look at this at this point, we can agendize it for the next meeting, but um, if not, we can just continue with the status quo. And uh, make sure that we uh get this done come this December.
So the idea is do it every December?
Yes, per the bylaws, it is every December.
Okay.
Yes, for for the next calendar year term. So unless, you know, we're prepared to, you know. Have this come back if there's a desire for 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 you all to to re-elect or or uh put your name in the hat or uh in the ring. But uh, if not, we'll continue with the status quo and and bring this back uh for for uh for election in December.
So we have to do it, oh, to agendize it for December?
Yeah.
He's saying we can either have the election next meeting, if you want to do it immediately, or we can wait till December to do it.
Exactly.
He's waiting, he needs some direction on that.
Okay, but but we can, if we agendize it for the next meeting and have our vote, then that new um term starts in January.
N- no, you you could you could, uh, it would actually be for the remainder of this calendar year. So that's what I'm saying. I mean, we're in June. If you want to just, like I said, status quo till. Till December.
I'll make you do it.
I'm on the microunit committee. I can't do it.
I don't know if anybody has, I I have no interest of taking over any of the positions, so.
Can we just make, have the election right this time?
Let's say anyone wants to vote next meeting.
Okay, we'll continue with the status quo and then we'll bring this up in December as per our bylaws. I, okay, perfect. And then third, um, I wanted to um alert again and make the re-announcement of. The uh, community workshop, which I made this this announcement at the last Planning Commission meeting, uh, as I indicated back then. Uh, we're in the process of of updating our downtown specific plan. Uh, we have a community survey out there. Uh, we have a community workshop coming up next Tuesday at six-thirty. Uh, the flyer is up on the screen. Uh, not only for those of us here in the chamber, but all for our viewing audience as well. Uh, there's a QR code that you can feel free to, you know, click on that and and take that survey. Uh, the community workshop will be via Zoom and uh there will be some breakout sessions. Um, after a a presentation uh from our consultant. Uh, there'll be, like I said, a breakout rooms uh in Zoom, so that way we can uh, you know, hear from the uh, the public directly. Uh, it's not, it's not a Q and A session, but it's a it's a it's an opportunity to get uh some additional feedback from the public. And so we've been pushing this and, you know, trying to get as much uh involvement and and community input as we as we can, uh, as we work through this. So I wanted just to remind everyone in the commission that this is coming and to please, 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 you know, be involved. And Ed- Eduardo, is this a online version of getting everybody in a room and sticking, uh, putting sticky notes on. Um, exhibits that people like, uh, or, you know, what what is the forum of that? Yeah, some somewhat. I mean, there there, you know, the there will be some, uh, I mean, the breakout rooms are still kind of being, uh, uh, you know. The logistics of that is still being worked out, but uh, but yeah, the 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 whole goal is to have it be a little more interactive. And I'm sorry, let me ask a different way. Are people going to be reacting to something on the twenty-eighth? Or is this sort of open-ended uh input from the public that then the consultant will go and design things? Right. No, that's a good question. And no, there, we're not gonna be prepared with presenting something because we want to hear from you. This is. You know, we feel that this is more of a grassroots. This needs to be a community-led effort, so. So it, the document will only be as good as, as, as it is if we have community input, which is why I'm stressing everyone to please be involved. So with that, we want, you know, we'll, we'll, not only the staff, but the consultant who does this for a living, they're going to hear from, from, from you, hear the ideas and then with that create some sort of draft and then at a later, uh, date, present that back, you know? Because the last thing we want to do is have a consultant come up with something to begin with, because then it's, you know, it's not really a community-driven document. We want this to be a community-driven document. So we want to hear from you and get those ideas so that, and, you know, kind of like what you're, what you did earlier with directing staff with, you know, with, 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 uh, with some of the, uh, the ordinances. That's what we want to, to, to do with, with our, with our consultant. Have the public drive that and, and, and have that direction given to, to them so they can come up with something. And then we'll work through it. It'll be a, a working document and, and ultimately finalized, presented back to the commission and, and, and to the council.
Cool. Thanks. All right. Uh, that brings us to report from our city's attorney's office.
Anything of this time?
Uh, I have a question for you, Joaquin.
Sure.
In the last marathon council meeting, when you presented, uh, it was supposed to be a workshop on the low-income housing, and then because of conflicts, it was said we're going to do a two-two-one meeting? You know what I'm referring to?
Oh, the last council?
The last council meeting, yeah. Can you explain to me what happened there?
Which item was this for? It's such a blur.
Yeah, I know, it was like five hours, six hours.
It was on the strategic affordable hous- it was the affordable housing strategic plan.
Strategic affordable housing. The mini mansion shows up and he's got twelve things on there, uh, one including make civic plaza surplus and allow low-income housing get a first crack, which this dais was, I personally was horrified about that. But then when it came to council discussion, there really was no council discussion. And it was because like Scott Nickle couldn't talk about number four and, and, you know, Pershtev lives on Main Street too. So then it kind of devolved into, well, we'll do separate meetings, I believe, with two city council members at a time.
So I think it was like two-two-ones and, and on that point, um, and just to stay within the confines of the Brown Act here and with the Brown Act being an issue there, I think the idea is that those would be opportunities to present information to the council members. It's not, um, it would actually be, um, improper for there to be any substantive discussion or, um, you want to avoid a, a serial meeting when you are having those.
Sure.
Two-two-ones. So I think it's more of a, probably be more of a distillation of, of the points that were presented, the, the recommendations, but not a forum for there to be continuous serial discussions outside of, um, public provision.
I'll, I'll explain the context for it. The, the reason is because there's a couple of areas in the city that are known, uh, spots based on where either people, uh, live or, or lease or work space. Um, and they are conflicted out from making decisions, much like what happens to the Planning Commission on occasion, that if their project is within a certain proximity to where you might live or, or own or lease space, uh, that you could be conflicted out from taking action on a project that is within that proximity. So there's a couple of defined areas within the city, particularly in the, in that case on Tuesday night, the Smoky Hollow area and the downtown area where it, there has been a precedent set and there has been a determination on which council members are conflicted out of speaking or making decisions on those areas. In a couple of areas, there's three council members and so they had to drew, you know, they drew straws and, and two drew short, short straws. And, and so that was the reason why, uh, the council member requested that in the future, the organization of the conversation is set up so that they could excuse themselves, uh, while talking about the pieces that they are conflicted out and then easily come back and it's organized in a way. Uh, in lieu of that, where they ended up planning is just going to the two-two-ones so that you, we, staff could have their respective conversations with the respective council members that can have those conversations on those component areas that, because in the plan, there were several topic areas that covered those conflict areas.
Are they voting on, on each?
They're not, they're not voting, but they'd be giving staff direction to proceed on a, in a direction on a document that they would end up making a decision on or voting on as a body.
So there's a song and dance that, um, and, and the logic behind packaging the two-two-ones and, and the way that Michael was describing is that, um, when, when an area where a member is conflicted out, um, they have to state the conflict on the record, move away from the dais, and they're not allowed to participate or influence the vote. So it, it's a little neater if when you have two or more members, well, when you have two members that are conflicted as to a particular area that, um, they know ahead of time and that also, when that comes up, they will know that together they can, um, step off. But for purposes of the two-two-ones, they're a good match because whoever's presenting to them will know that, okay, we're not going to discuss this topic because it would be improper for them to, if that makes sense.
I, I just want to add, and I think I clarified Tuesday night, that although the Planning Commission is not required to make a recommendation on this document, that, uh, one, it came before you as a part of a study session. I wasn't here, but I don't think the document itself was cooked. I think it was more of a discussion and presentation. But it will come back before you to make a recommendation informally or formally, however, it will come back to you, um, to make a recommendation on the product that ends up going back to, before it goes to council.
Okay. Yeah, I was just concerned I didn't get to hear the thoughts of the individual council members on, you know, all those issues that we've been wrestling with. But now that it's been explained, I think I understand. All right, uh, that brings us to Planning Commissioner comments.
Go ahead.
Well, one question from Mike. I'm curious, when the development impact fees went up like that, do you get calls?
Yeah, we certainly got calls. Um, so we, we had plenty of conversations from developers, particularly larger developers in the community who have projects, uh, in the queue or they're considering investment opportunities. And so, uh, we had several conversations with, with developers, walking them through the methodology. Um, and, and thankfully, I, I think everybody wound up on the same page in understanding what the intent and purpose was. Fortunately, what happens moving forward, uh, is that when, when people acquire land, and I think, you know, you, you might know this as well, these things get baked and folded into the financing, uh, when, when property is acquired and develops are, are financed. And so, uh, the city will be made whole and the, the developer just finances projects with these costs in mind as long as they know ahead of the time. So that's, the key component is that they know ahead of time, uh, which is also part of the justification for the phasing in of that fee so that it wasn't such a drastic change overnight, um, so that those who have already purchased property or already have projects in the pipeline aren't penalized for financing something that no longer pencils because these fees have changed overnight. That answer?
Yeah, thank you.
I have a, a question and, uh, this goes back to, so in two thousand eighteen, this, uh, this dais or most, many people on it approved the Smoky Hollow Plan. And at the time, and, and this is a good segue from your, your public input question. We went to a, uh, we went to the Jocelyn Center, we looked at different types of mixed use and, and industrial use and from that came the Smoky Hollow Plan. And some of the tenants of that were walkable streets. Um, live-work was discussed, although it didn't make its way into the plan, but caretaker units made it way into the plan. We talked about, uh, th- this dais talked about live-work at the time and it, and now granted, it was a different administration, it was mostly a different staff. Paul, I think you were there at the time, but, um, we were counseled at the time to not discuss live-work. It's probably better to do it at the, um, you know, two thousand twenty-one, um, uh, residential survey of the, uh.
The housing element?
The housing element, thank you. And, and, you know, so now the hu- housing element has come and gone. We did talk about, uh, a little bit of live-work there, but it never really made its way. Uh, now, fast forward to last month, I had a meeting with, uh, with Mark Tellez and David Balian at their project at, uh, one forty Oregon. And, you know, that's the thing that where there's two, two tall buildings, there was a height variance that we approved. And, uh, Mark and David were concerned that they have caretaker units on the roof that, uh, are far setback. Yes, they, uh, exceed the height limitations, but everything exceeds the height limitations. The elevator bay exceeds the height limitations. Um, their caretaker, their caretaker units are no longer approved because, uh, they, they don't really fit within, within the, uh, the code anymore. But it just, it, it made me think about the process of the Smoky Hollow Plan and how a lot of the things that we were hoping to get have not made their way into reality yet. Um, a walkable street, they were talking about trying to create a little bump out on the corner there, but it's complicated because there's four corners in the intersection and it doesn't pencil. And my concern is that we approved a plan for Smoky Hollow that is now getting implemented and some of these things that we hope to have happen are not working their way into the plan. So I'm concerned about that. I mean, this is, that, I don't think there's, this is the first project to be approved, you know, uh, uh, Mayor Boyle's project is a beautiful one, it's got a nice public benefit. But we're not, I'm not seeing the public benefit that we hope to get in the Smoky Hollow specific plan. And so what can we do to, to bring that back to the forefront? How can we work a little harder to make people more comfortable walking on the streets? You know, the little coffee shop that they proposed is great, but, you know, that's not a real public benefit. That's, it's a, a two-hundred-square-foot thing. Um, how can we encourage more, uh, of these caretaker units to start to bring a little more live-work in there? I know that doesn't solve that problem, but I, I just would like to see a little more attention to detail to, to match the plan.
Well, and I know that Franklin was supposed to be activated as like this walkable Second Street promenade. Um, and I, I can't imagine relying on property orders to make that happen.
Right.
So I guess the question for staff is what, maybe come back with some type of report of, of, you know, what steps can the city take to help bring that vision to life in Smoky Hollow with as far as walkability, more cafes, more, you know, reasons for people to kind of get outside, not just be in your cars, because I work over there and there's not a lot of people walking around. Uh, more towards main, I see them going, going to lunch and that, but not a lot of foot traffic on that side of town at all, so.
Yeah, well, it's not real comfortable to walk on those streets right now. There's sidewalks are skinny, um, so anyway, that's not, I don't expect an answer here. I just, I just wanted to go on record saying that it'd be nice to, to try to implement some of those, um, some of those tenants that are beautifully illustrated in that specific plan. I mean, some, we spent a lot of money on that plan, so.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hessler. Um, I, on that note, there are a couple of things currently in motion, uh, that Public Works is working on, the restriping of, of some of the parking to implement some of those concepts in the specific plan. Um, aside from that, and I think that's happening this, this fiscal year, um, aside from that, I, in the current budget that was adopted this week, we did seek a allocation to bring the consultants back who originally prepared that plan, uh, to revamp it. And it's probably a good opportunity to have a study session with the commission to talk about what worked, what didn't work. It's been, I think, four or five years since it was adopted. We had a two-plus-year hiatus that the world changed, um, and with that, so did development, you know, appetite and land uses and retail's morphed. There's a lot of things that have changed that probably weren't considered, um, five or six years ago when the plan was in, in development. And so this, this fiscal year, we will be bringing that, that consultant back to come before the Planning Commission and it would be a good idea to have a couple of study sessions to talk about those things, even maybe go out to Smoky Hollow and walk some of those sites, walk the, the streets, visit the developments that have been, you know, approved and built so you can see what really happened physically, uh, because it looks one-way on paper and then when you get out there in the site, it may or may not have turned out what we envisioned. And so, um, that is coming down the pipeline. I think it's very timely that you, that you mentioned that.
All right. Right, I'd, I'd love that. That's great. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the dais? All right, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and good luck to our El Segundo All-Stars tonight.
Oh.